I'll call the November twenty seventh, twenty twenty five meeting of the Newcastle Planning and Zoning Commission to order. First item of business will be roll call.
Gordon Arness.
Present.
Carl Laban.
Here.
Will Wright.
Here.
Keep Leghorn as absent in equity.
Here.
We have quorum and we'll proceed with business. Item number two is to consider approval of the agenda as presented. Is there any question or changes?
No.
Yeah.
I have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor, signify with a brief hand. Be unanimously approved. Item number three, consider approval of the minutes from our October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five meeting. Any changes to that? I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor signify with a brief hand. Be unanimously approved. Item four is reported city council's decisions on planning commission recommendations of our last meeting.
So item six A and B was continued by the applicant. That's the River View villages for the land use and the rezoning. Item sixty was a request for rezoning for the Lamar Landing PUD and it was approved by council with a vote of five to zero. The preliminary plat for Lamar Landing PUD was approved five to zero. Item six F was a request for rezoning for Matthew Hauser and Angel Hauser at nineteen fifteen Northwest Eighth Street. The rezoning was from he, excuse me, it was a twenty forty land use map amendment from suburban residential to estate residential and the rezoning from E one to Ag. The general Ag holder approved five to zero. And then two applications exactly the same was a rezoning from Ag and E three to E three for item six I and K.
Were those over this way?
On Pennsylvania. They were two lots here. Pennsylvania. The rezoning went prior to the lot split and when they did the lot split, they took in an additional fifteen feet that wasn't zoned for E three.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And then we had. Item six M was a request for, from rezoning from IR, restricted light manufacturing to IH two for heavy manufacturing and the companion application for a U P O R for a concrete batch plant. So six M and O were both approved with a vote of five to zero. And six P, Q, and R were for located at thirty five, twenty one Northwest Thirty Second, thirty four, seventy three Northwest Thirty Second and thirty five, twenty three Northwest Thirty Second were for deviations of facade, allowing the rear in the C C two community commercial district, allowing the rear elevation to be architectural metal.
So at the south side of Thirty Second?
It's on the north side, the rear of the buildings.
Okay.
Just past the storage blocks.
Okay. Uh, trying to figure out how far west that is. It's.
It's where the fireworks. Where fireworks stands used to be.
Okay.
Cecil's place.
Oh, it's on the other side.
Council. No, we're also, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Those were all the planning commission items for city council for the November.
Item number five is continued request. I don't believe there are any. Item number six is citizens comments for citizens who want to be heard on matters that are not on our agenda. Any citizens that want to be heard on items not on our agenda. Seeing none, we'll proceed. Item number seven is a lot split deed approvals.
This was.
Tell us which it was.
It was just on Grigsby Road. It was already have the zoning for the estate residential and they did a lot split to create two lots.
Okay. That's the area where we did the lot splits and stuff.
The rezoning.
Item number eight is discussion and possible action on the final plat at the Grove at Newcastle.
Good evening commissioners. I'm Keith Johnston, Development Services Coordinator for the final plat at the Grove at Newcastle, located in the northwest quarter of section fifteen, township nine north, range four west. Owner and developer is Grove Newcastle LLC. The engineer is Lewin Associates and we do have Lewin Associates is here as a representative. She'll be here to answer any questions that you may have also. So the Grove of Newcastle is a proposed sixteen point nine three acre development that is part of the Windermere Plan Unit Development or P U D ordinance number seven, eight, five. The project consists of one lot for a senior multifamily residential development. There are nineteen buildings proposed with a hundred and twenty units and also a community center building. The parcel is generally located south of the north, of Northwest Sixteenth Street and west of Garrett Drive. The city of Newcastle staff and developer have been coordinating to advance this project since August of this year. There have been multiple reviews at this time and the applicant has addressed all comments with the request for the variance per one fifty three point zero one three. It's detailed in this report. Regarding access, the parcel has frontage along Garrett Drive and Northwest Sixteenth Street and will have two access road connections to Garrett Drive. The south access will be exit only and then for emergency situations, it can be an egress for emergency vehicles. Access through at the moment will be through privately owned and maintained driveways. No public right of way is dedicated. All roads, sidewalk, parking spaces and common areas will be maintained privately.
Yes, so I'm trying to keep up. The south, you said about the traffic. Will you say that again?
So regarding the, the south access point and driveway, that is egress only or exit only, except for it could be open for emergency vehicles.
And the north is.
In and out.
An exit. In and out, okay. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Oh, sure.
You answered my question and I.
All right. Continuing.
Didn't interrupt.
All good. For drainage, drainage and detention will be designed such that runoff from the proposed development will not exceed pre-development flows. A detailed drainage report was submitted by the developer for city review and approval. Drainage will discharge into an existing detention pond that was built for Windermere Phase Eight. The P O A, homeowners association or the owner shall be responsible for maintenance of all drainage easements and infrastructure for the development. For sanitary sewer, the proposed lots will be served by public gravity sanitary sewer. There is an existing public eight inch sanitary sewer line on the northern part of the development. Developer has designed eight inch sanitary sewer lines throughout the property and dedicated public sewer easements to serve the project. Any private improvements, including the paving and sidewalks located within the public utilities and such water and sewer are the responsibility of the owner or the homeowners association. These will not be repaired or reconstructed by the city when performing required maintenance or repairs to the public utilities. For water, the proposed lots will be served by public water mains extended throughout the development, which will meet required service levels and fire protection needs. An existing twelve inch water, water line is located along the east boundary of the project.
Okay.
And then regarding parkland, regarding parkland dedication requirements, there's a three and a half percent of the plot of the acreage must be dedicated as parkland or four hundred dollars per lot fee in lieu of the acreage has to be dedicated. For this development, either zero point five nine acres or four hundred dollars would be dedicated. Developer is requesting to contribute four hundred dollars in lieu of the acreage. Planning staff and the city's engineering consultant have reviewed this development with the applicant's design team and the applicant has addressed all staff comments regarding the final plat. The applicant is requesting a variance in order to meet city requirements and regulations. The variance is for one fifty three point zero five one sidewalks. The ordinance requires all residential subdivisions shall provide for the installation of sidewalks on section line roads, local and collector roads. Developer is proposing to install sidewalks within the development and connect them at both entrances at Garrett Drive. Sidewalks are not proposed along Garrett Drive or between the driveways and the right of way due to location of open drainage stitches and drainage improvements. Also sidewalks are not proposed along the north side of the development, which is adjacent to Northwest Sixteenth. This request is like Windermere Phase Eight where sidewalks were not required on Northwest Sixteenth or Country Club Road. Staff recommends approval of this final plat as submitted, including the proposed variance to met with sidewalks. So I can take any questions and we have the engineer to answer any questions also.
I've got a few. On the sewer, is it in the west utility easement that comes up and then comes across the Windermere Storage Access Road?
You're asking if the sewer is on the west?
The, the main sewer line that goes up to Northwest Sixteenth Street. There's a north, south utility easement there that says it's fifteen foot, no, ten foot. It, well, all I saw was fifteen.
Fifteen foot sewer, isn't it?
Yeah.
The main sewer on the site runs from the northeast corner down and around the south end of the pond and then it goes across the storage property.
Okay. But that shows it's.
And that's the main sewer line across the property.
Okay. Then the. But it looked like it opens up on the Garrett Drive rather than Sixteenth Street or is it within the sixteen foot or Sixteenth Street, Sixteenth Street easement? Does my question make any sense or do you want me to ask it again?
Maybe ask it one more time.
Okay, sure. The, the way it's routed around the pond.
Mm-hmm.
At the north edge of it, it turns and goes back to the east to Garrett Drive.
Somewhere past that point, with our plans that we submitted for Windermere A, we bore underneath Sixteenth and connect somewhere to the northeast of there.
Okay. So you're going, you're gonna go underneath Garrett Drive and then go north?
No, that's, that has already been completed with Windermere Eight. For this development, we are only tying on to that existing line that runs on the north edge of our property, on the south edge of the pond.
Let me help a little bit on Windermere Eight. There was a development agreement because we didn't, they didn't have access to sewer. So there was a development agreement between Windermere, Meek and the city of Newcastle. We brought down sewer from Meadow Creek and obtained an easement from, from a property owner. They brought that sewer down. We split the bore and they brought the sewer over to this property. And that was also so our future park civilian could gain sewer access as well.
Okay, so the, so the new sewer from this division is still gonna go underneath Sixteenth Street?
It's, yes.
But there's an existing sewer line there where they're just gonna tie into.
They just did it this last eight months. Yeah. They brought down the sewer from Windermere, or from, excuse me, from Meadow Creek.
Okay, but, but this line's not installed yet?
No.
But there is an existing sewer line coming from the west that goes under there already?
Yes.
Okay. We're making some progress here, sorry. On, on this final plat, and of course it's a final plat, so it doesn't show them, but on the original review, there was a, some layout of the streets and the units. And, okay, there you go. Moment to get oriented.
Garrett Drive.
How, how deep are the parking lots on the, well, whatever the street is that enters, well, on the, on the streets where the parking is just off street and perpendicular parking? How deep are those?
I believe they're eighteen foot. They're aligned with the code, yeah.
Okay.
So I must have missed the preliminary plat on this deal. So these buildings are, are multi with multiple people within the same building, but there's separate structures that have the same rough line?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Our preliminary plat on this was basically a block.
Okay.
Cause it was just the PUD.
Okay. I just, just trying to make sure I understand what I'm looking at.
Yeah, well, that's why you can't remember. I have a problem.
They're in a sense just townhomes.
No, I understand. Just built right against each other.
Yeah.
Now, as the streets in here are actually gonna be classified as driveways.
Is that so that we're not maintaining it?
We aren't maintaining it or building them or they don't have to meet street standards, I think. Is that correct?
Well, they've got some kind of call out.
I believe we still meet the street standards, but they are privately owned and will be privately maintained.
And they're, and they're reduced width, aren't they? Aren't they twenty feet or something?
I believe they're twenty four feet.
I don't see call outs at all.
It should be at the top of that C two point two dash one page in the top left corner there. It illustrates a typical drive section there.
Okay.
I don't have them printed out and I can't see that far real side to view for sure.
Yeah.
I found a note in here that calls a twenty four foot width.
Okay.
All the streets?
Yes.
I found one note where it says one time, but I'm sure it's the same width throughout.
Well, except the, the south exit is not, is what, is not twenty four, is it, or is it? It looks like it's drawn narrower is what I'm saying, but maybe the north one's got a double entrance.
Mm-hmm. I believe the south one is still twenty four feet to be able to meet fire code, to be able to allow them to enter and exit during emergencies.
It's got an annotation there on the corner that says twenty four feet.
Okay.
So just thinking through this while you're looking, I just, just gonna kind of think out loud just a minute. So whoever does this is gonna build the buildings and they're gonna put the streets in. And then after that, basically everything past Garrett and Sixteenth Street is theirs. That fair, their city won't be involved in any of that. My question is, is how does, does that affect any of the utilities or just the streets?
All of the utilities are still owned by the city.
Okay.
And the streets are privately owned.
Well, I understand whoever, whoever owns that's gonna own the streets, right? Okay.
And there's supposed to be a document that, well, it says somewhere that the maintenance of the utilities, if sidewalks or streets or, or, well, if property's disturbed, the city won't be prepared to get to the original standard. So one of my questions is.
That sound like trouble to me.
Yeah. Are these gonna be rentals or are they gonna be sold units?
They are gonna be rentals.
Okay. So the LLC, whatever, will continue to own?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Cause I think having repairs done by homeowners association would be about a non started cause it could kill the homeowners association these for somebody on seniors. So that takes care of two of my questions. In the materials, it said the repairs to the detention would be borne by the homeowners association, but it doesn't reference any agreement between the housing addition homeowners association and this homeowners association. Is there any present, that probably addressed?
I'm unsure of that one, but from my understanding, the owners of the Grove will be maintaining the detention pond.
And that's that big detention pond on the, on the left-hand side of that drawing?
Yes.
And does the water just drain from this place? I thought there was water that come from other places into that pond, are there?
Yeah, there is. Windermere Eight and some off-site drainage from the west side of Windermere Eight all drain into this detention pond.
Is that a function of the reason that you want to include this structure in this grove to make them responsible or what's your thought process on that? I guess my question is why does, why are only these people responsible for the cost of taking care of that said pond?
Actually, the paperwork said it would be shared. My concern.
Is that what I heard? I'm sorry if I.
The paperwork probably does say that it's share. I'm, I'm aware.
It's okay, it's just questions, right? We're just trying to make it as smooth as we can, right?
But we came to confirm and get back to you on that.
So that's a pretty good sized pond.
Yes.
Is this gated?
Yes, it is gated.
Can we talk, are we then, we're.
We can all chip in. I'm not saying anything, so I'm nearly, you can say something.
In the narrative, it was listed there's a variance to not have a sidewalk along, along Sixteenth Street.
Right.
With this going in here and then I'm assuming since Meek owns the property to the west, there will be another development there, does it not? Is it?
That's already been final plotted.
Okay.
And we basically elected not to try and put sidewalks along Sixteenth Street here just because of the way the easement is.
Okay.
And the way traffic has been. Probably better not have people trying to walk next to this highway right there.
No, they're just jogging and, just jogging. Good now. They're red shirts. It's. Let's discuss that.
And my memory says these units do not have garages, is that correct?
No, they do.
They do have garage.
There are.
The ones around the perimeter have garages.
Oh, the internal ones do not.
Mm-hmm.
They're all one story.
So I'm sure this has already been covered. What's the size of these independent units?
They're anywhere from eight hundred square feet to about thirteen hundred square feet.
Okay.
Two bed, two bath, one bed, one bath, a mixture of the two.
They're one or two story?
They're all one story.
I guess I'm gonna jump around here, pick on Jeff a little bit and see if you're gonna.
Well, he's here.
Have you seen any proposed easement on the utilities on this as far as we aren't gonna fix?
No, I haven't seen.
Think that's very viable.
Be dedicated on the plat where, where it talks about the public E's for the water and sewer. And then also a note stating that all the drives, these are all driveways, they're access drives, they're not roads, so they're not.
Well, you can call them whatever you want to call them, but people gonna be driving down, right? Okay, keep going.
So the, the plat should dedicate the easements and how the drives are private stated on there with the agreement that we want, city will not be responsible for repairs to those drives in the event that there is infrastructure that has to be repaired or replaced.
And just having that on, you think having that on the plat and not as a specific agreement? It's on the plat, it'll be covered.
Have to look at the language they use for sure.
Yeah, I think we want to watch that and I, I have not seen it, so.
Make sure that we have that noted on the, on the plat.
Okay, yeah, we just wanna watch for that. And on, when I first looked at this, I didn't think this was through traffic on all the interior driveways, but it is, so if they tear up the street in some way, there is exit ability without, if, if one of the perimeter streets is torn out, they can still go.
Yes, they're all two-way.
Do you know how many parking spots are allocated to each dwelling unit?
Um, I believe. I'm not a one hundred percent sure on that, but I believe that there was at least two per each, but I believe that we surpassed that with the, with the addition of the.
Ones that have garage.
Garages, yes.
And the ones that have garages obviously have the driveways that allow, that accommodate parking.
Okay, there gonna be.
Who is that, an office in the northwest corner?
Clubhouse.
Excuse me, clubhouse.
And they have things like a movie room, a pool table.
Yeah, I get it. Thank you. Didn't think anybody's gonna get a really big house over on that corner.
How does trash work in a community like this? I see there's two dumpster enclosures, one on the southwest and northwest corner.
I believe that each unit is in charge of just setting their trash outside of the door and then the property handles taking the trash to the dumpsters and.
So they have a trash service then?
Yes.
Okay. I was just thinking two places for an older, older aged community might be.
That's great.
We've covered the questions I had written down by the fact that they're rentals. Anyone have any other questions?
I just got the general question I started the whole conversation with. Why do we decide not to make these dedicated streets? Was it our choice or was it the developer's choice?
Gated, right?
Oh, it is gated, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry. I can't forget.
You're right.
Sorry. Thank you. Can you just tell me I'm silly? Sorry.
No, it's fine. Okay. Is there any public comment on this application? Seeing none. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval. Council said to the notation that we're gonna. Council said to the notation that we're gonna address the that the non-maintenance provision is in the, is disclosed in the plat. Uh, I guess since I'm saying that to Jeff's satisfaction.
Sure.
And did anyone have anything else that we need to note?
The variance.
Oh, and-
Variance in sidewalks, right?
Yeah, including approval of the variance on the sidewalks.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, second by a raised hand, be unanimously approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Maybe you're right. I'm presenting as a companion.
Okay. Item number nine is a public hearing to consider an application for, well, excuse me. Just sit here and talk. Janay suggested I do this a different way and that she's right, so let me start over. On items nine and ten, these are a related issue. It's a amendment to our land use map, which is part of our comprehensive plan. And then according to that amendment, to address a PUD zoning in the area. So items nine and ten are related. And I'm going to read the uh, general statement for them together because it's basically the same. And then we'll discuss them combined because the issue runs together. And then we'll vote on them individually.
Okay.
Items nine and ten are a public hearing to consider an application for an amendment to the twenty forty future land use map from general commercial to mixed-use residential and commercial for R and R Land Development LLC. And it's also to consider an application for rezoning from PUD ordinance number eight-nine-four. That's because we made this a PUD before. Planned unit development, PUD, to a planned unit development for our R and R Land Development LLC for Riverview Villages located in the southwest quarter of section thirty-three, township ten north, range four west of the Indian Meridian, McLean County, Oklahoma. The property address is northwest Thirty-second Street and Riverfront Drive, Newcastle, Oklahoma. R two thousand twenty-five dash zero-zero-five. And these matters have been continued on our agenda before.
Janay Greenley with the Newcastle Planning Department. I'll be presenting the Riverview Villages um, land use amendment and the PUD rezoning. Um, this is for items nine and ten. So the Riverview Villages is requesting a land use amendment from general commercial to mixed-use residential and general commercial designation. And rezoned from PUD planned unit development to PUD planned unit development for R two thousand twenty-five dash zero-zero-five. As the owner and developer is R and R Land Developments LLC. And the engineer and designer is CEC and design consultants Building Culture. Um, the location is approximately one and a half miles west of the I forty-four and Highway Thirty-seventh interchange on the north side of Highway Thirty-seven. For approximately seventy-seven point three-three acres. On the left-hand side of the screen up here is just the surrounding land use. Right now, you can see that it's vacant property. Uh, to the north, you have single-family dwellings. As well as to the east, to the south, there's commercial uses and self-storage. And to the west, uh, single-family dwellings and vacant land is way. The surrounding zoning, um, as stated, it is currently a PUD. To the north is uh, E-three residential estates district. To the east, it's RF-one, single-family residential and CC-two, community commercial district. To the south is CC-two, community commercial district and general agriculture. And to the west is E-one suburban estate residential and PUD land unit development for CC-two community commercial district and E-one suburban estates residential. To the right here is the land use, the twenty forty comprehensive plan and future land use map currently designates this as general commercial. They are requesting to go to mixed-use residential and general commercial. To the north, we have suburban residential. To the east, there's mixed-use residential and commercial. To the south, general commercial. And to the west, general commercial state residential. So just a little bit of background um, on this application. As we stated, this is currently zone PUD. So in uh, November of twenty-one, we worked with um, CEC and the developer to do a PUD for this area. Um, and as you can see, um, this was the site plan. The sketch flat that went with the uh, rezoning for the PUD designating the complete frontage um, along Thirty-seven as general commercial under the CC-two district. And on the east portion of Riverfront Drive, it's general commercial and under the CC-two district with residential E-three to the north. This was approved with ordinance eight-ninety-four by council in November of twenty-one. So as it is, it could develop as commercial frontage and on the east side, commercial as well as residential.
On the back residential there, that's been developed as residential, hasn't it?
No, this is not. This is not, they had, what you're thinking is that they brought in a preliminary flat.
Right.
For part of this to do the E-three designation and do single-family here.
That's right.
And then they decided they're going to revisit and kind of rethink what we want to do with this property.
Oh.
And there was, so they came in and talked with us about a little bit over a year ago. Met the city manager, um, our utilities department, our streets department. And we discussed what it would be like for them to rezone to a mixed-use development that had a new urbanism, higher density, um-
Okay, but we, we went through that being residential.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but they, they did not proceed with a final plat.
Okay.
It was never developed.
Was there, was there a reason, a reason given for that?
That they decided not to, they decided they wanted to do a different type of development. So they come forward with a PUD and with a new preliminary plat and a new design for Riverview Villages. So Riverview Villages um, is a mixed-use development. Um, and with the preliminary plat, um, hope I don't mess up the name here. Boonerhoop? Boonerhoop? Not getting it right, go ahead, Austin.
Boonerhoop, yeah.
Boonerhoop.
Very close.
Boonerhoop. Um, design, which basically is designed under the new urbanism principles. Um, narrower streets, smaller lots, um, more zero lot line. Um, so setbacks are reduced. Um, it's the, the idea I think behind it is to create this living street. Um, and so you have more of a neighborhood feel. So the whole idea is to create this destination. Um, within this, they, the PUD, they are asking for variances, variations to our subdivision regulations that are detailed out in the PUD and have been detailed, detailed out in the staff report for the rezoning as well as the uh, staff report for the preliminary plat. Basically, um, I, I think one of the most important things here is that they've requested to reduce the local road to twenty feet. Our local road right now is twenty-six feet. Um, so they also have reduced radiuses, but they have to meet emergency access regulations. There's no sidewalks um, in, within this development. Um, the, the, the streets act as your carriageway for your pedestrians and your vehicle traffic. Um, there'll be four-inch rolling curbs throughout, so curb and gutter, but rolling curves. Um, there are two-hundred-and-twenty-six village, single-family lots with a minimum lot area of three thousand square feet. There are ten multifamily lots with the minimum lot area of three thousand square feet. And then there's twenty village center, commercial residential lots, so grid work units. Uh, with a minimum lot area of twelve hundred square feet. Uh, this site plan kind of just overall depicts the, the overall development. What you see in the kind of the pinkish is your, your village, single-family lots. Your blue is your multifamily, the green is the open space. Um, and then the yellow is the um village center, commercial residential lots, twenty of those lots. As I said, there's our zero lot lines, the required setbacks, side setbacks meet the building cove. They have three and five feet. And where you join private property, there's a five-foot rear setback. But the front setbacks are all zero lot lines.
So this, this rolling curb is how far off the front of the building?
Well, you have a forty-five-foot right-of-way, so the right-of-way is reduced from the fifty to down to forty-five with the twenty-foot street. So your, your houses meet the street. There could probably be what, about ten feet off those front of the curve? Is it probably about-
Yeah, the street's twenty feet and forty-five is right-of-way.
From the front door, how far till you hit the curb?
At least ten feet.
At least ten feet. Is that correct, Janay?
Yeah. Twelve and a half?
Twenty-two. At least ten.
Yeah.
Okay, just trying to get the concept in my head, right?
In, in the yellow-
Yeah.
Area. Well, I guess it'd be the same, yeah.
Thank you.
So the density is about three-point-three lots per acre. Um, there's about fifteen-point-twenty-eight acres, fifteen-point-two-eight acres of common area um, and parkland. They are asking for the minimum parkland requirement is three and a half percent of improved parkland. They're asking for one percent to be improved. But they far exceed the overall dedication of common area and parkland. Which is that they will only improve one percent with playground equipment, parkas, things like that, volleyball courts, whatever, to meet uh, the, the requirement of the uh, subdivision regulations. Um, there, there will be previous parking allowed for private parking only. So driveways and private drives will uh, be allowed different types of materials. Cobblestones, crushed granite. All of those things that are laid out in their design guidelines that their ARB, their Architectural Review Board, will have to approve um, before they submit for building permit. There is one parking space per unit, um, and then there's one parking space required for every two hundred square feet of commercial. And there's cross, cross-access and shared parking throughout those commercial and multifamily areas. The masonry requirement-
For the multifamily, how many parking spots for the multifamily?
Uh, there is shared parking and it's one per two hundred square feet for commercial.
But that's not the, that's not multi, right? Commercial's a gallon, right?
It should, well, multifamily will fall under the commercial building permit.
So multifamily is light blue, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And it's only going to have
One.
One, one or two.
Two square feet.
Okay.
And then the masonry requirements are forty percent required masonry and then sixty percent with other architectural materials, which would include masonry and hardy board. Um, but no vinyl siding is allowed throughout. Um, the interesting thing with this development is that um, every single building permit that would come forward will have to go through an architectural review board set up by the Property Owners Association and um, the developer. They will review each building permit for clients with their standards and with the letter before they can submit for a building permit with the city and the council.
Gee, I thought all homeowners associations were supposed to be that way.
That'd make it easier for them.
Well, they're supposed to be, right?
Would, well-
Most of them have architecture committees, right?
Yeah, they do. There's language in the PUD, in this PUD, that requires them to submit a letter of approval to the city prior to a building permit.
Okay, so there's, the architectural group's going to send you a letter saying that they approve it?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's, that's the part I didn't get, thank you.
Yes, sir.
But it's still not going to comply with our current code. It's going to comply with their building.
Everything that is in the PUD.
Forty-sixty, right, forty-sixty.
My uh, staff has, has worked with this developer and, you know, one of the main things that when I think about the location for this, located on Highway Thirty-seven. This isn't on a section line road, this is on a state highway. Um, it's a mile and a half from the interchange of I forty-four and Thirty-seven. As you know, the OTA, the turnpike is going to come through there. This area along, along Thirty-seven, most of it, the frontages are slated for commercial. I won't get into the, the preliminary plat and more of the infrastructure until we get to that, the preliminary plat stage. But everything, and I'm happy to answer questions, and we all can answer questions as well, that is laid out in the preliminary plat is all, is addressed in the PUD for, for all of the, the preliminary plat variations. Um, this location, you know, being that the, the original PUD that was approved, um, was approved for general commercial and, and CC-two. Um, and with the, with the one E-three block. So at this density and a, and kind of a usual type of development in this location, staff does support, make recommendation for the land use amendment from general commercial to mixed-use residential and commercial as well as the PUD R two thousand twenty-five dash zero-zero-five. I'm happy to answer questions now, but the applicant does have a pretty lengthy presentation that they would like to go through regarding the, the rezoning. Um, I discussed that with them if you are willing and you want to hear their presentation. And we can answer questions altogether regarding the rezoning and then do the preliminary after that. It's up to you.
I would like to ask a couple of questions. One is on the current entry road to Riverview Estates. We've got a reduced rear setback line. And a severely reduced front setback line.
All these lots along here will be front. There will be no, there's not going to be any rear yards. These are all front, these lots here.
Okay, and so those setbacks are how much?
Uh, those setbacks are- Those setbacks are zero for village family.
And that's the main entrance for that neighborhood right now?
That is correct. I will say, I also needed to say that too. We did not have any protest regarding this application, no formal protest.
Somebody knows what's happened.
I did have one, well, I had a call last week and it was actually from a gentleman that lives in River View Estates and he asked when it was going to be on. I thought he might show up this evening, but he actually said, I'm excited for it. Like, I'm happy about this.
Well, my concern is, is that if you, if you congest that entry?
Yes.
Road, it's not going to be much of a road in million dollar homes.
Yeah, that's my concern.
Yeah. You can see, and I, I mean, we can go into the plat when you get a little bit more, like I said, you can almost count the number of lots that front on this road. Multifamily, they'll have private drives, they're not, those are, be the private, all the other roads will be public brands where the water and sewer infrastructure will be. But the lots along this road, we got, let's see, five, six?
Well, in the first application, in all honesty, I had enough time, I could read that, but you guys have been working on this for four months, six months.
Five, six.
And in three days I didn't get, get through it and figure out what all's happened. So that's why that question's there.
Yes, sir.
But that's the only initial question I had that I was wanting to get thoughts on before I heard the rest of it. So I'm willing to hear the rest.
Yeah, let's, let's, I mean, they spent all the time to get it ready. Let's, let's have a party.
Sounds good.
Do you like us to give the presentation?
Yeah.
It's, it's not long, don't worry. It's like under 10 minutes, so.
Oh, well, hey.
I figure we can leave lots of time for discussion.
I, I talk longer than that.
It'll just knock me off.
I'll turn.
You may have to.
Turn light, follow.
Do I press it now?
No, no, it's not required.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I think I see you doing something. Still wait, there's solid. Okay. See anything on my computer? All right, well, I'll go ahead and say, my name is Austin Tenell and I represent the design team at Building Culture on behalf of Russell, the developer and his team. And so we've been working on this with him for, I don't know, over a year. So Russell and Tabitha came to us saying, hey, we want to build a little bit of a different type of community. We want to build a walkable community. We want to build a place where families can live here, kids can roam freely, a place for elderly and people to age in place and everyone in between. And also we visited these communities that have had really cool like neighborhood centers. And so that's where we're introducing mixed use and commercial into the project, but we're doing it, I would say, in a very like neighborly way that integrates within the neighborhood. And it's not these giant commercial buildings, but smaller scale commercial buildings where you can have a coffee shop, you can have some small offices and, and other, you know, even, we've seen some potential because I'm waiting for this, I'm just going to speak off the cuff for a little bit. We have a wide range of housing in this neighborhood and that was one of the most important things when you're doing kind of a diverse, walkable neighborhood. And when we say diverse, we really mean a diverse type of housing. So there's houses that are 800 square feet, there are houses that are 1,200 square feet, 1,600 square feet, there'll probably be houses that are 4,000 square feet plus on our like estate lots. And part of the reason for that is, so multiple, and then we also have rental properties, you know, and kind of these multifamily apartment buildings. And we're thinking of that as not one giant apartment building, but smaller apartment buildings that create courtyards and very beautiful landscaping was very important. Having public areas and kind of a civic realm was very important to all of this design and development. And the reason we really like having diverse housing by price point and kind of different, you know, life stages within a single neighborhood is it allows you to, well, one, just kind of a diverse group of people to live there, but also it allows you to move within a community as you have kids, as your kids age out, as you retire, as you get married. You don't have to pick up and leave your community that's, hey, this community here is for $300,000 homes. And if you want a $500,000 home, you got to move, you know, miles away into a different school district. So it just allows for a bit more of a community feel where people live there longer term. And we've seen this happen in other walkable neighborhoods that we've lived in. I've been kind of living in walkable neighborhoods. I grew up in the suburbs of Houston, just, just FYI, so, you know, very, in the Cypress area, it's not in Houston proper. And in the past 10 years, we've gotten to live and work in walkable neighborhoods and, and I'm 37 now, so I was 27 when I started. It was just me and my wife and we didn't have kids. But what was awesome, and this was Carlton Landing, Oklahoma, when we first moved here, I was apprenticing as a mason out there and we just lived in a little garage apartment. We couldn't afford a house in Carlton Landing. But our time there, our five years there, we knew more people than we had known since college, had more friends, more, like, we were friends with people in their 30s, their 40s, their 50s and 60s, and we never had to make plans. Meaning we would just go out on walks. We'd see people in the park, we'd get a game of spikeball going, we'd go to the local meeting house, the coffee shop every Friday night and there would just be people there. There would be grandparents there, there would be families with young kids hanging out there. And it was kind of this magical, like, you could almost say like a utopia where you're like, wow, life can actually be like this and that everything has to be planned and kids don't have to be driven everywhere. And we made jokes that they were free range kids because the kids would kind of run around the neighborhood in packs. So it's something I've been very passionate about for 10 years. So I've been really excited to work with Russell and Tabitha on this. And I think we've really taken a lot of these concepts, these principles, these ingredients. And this is not a super dense neighborhood. You know, this is not, I don't know if you're familiar with Wheeler District in Oklahoma City, it's not as dense as that. I mean, I think, you know, 3.3 units an acre on the single family lots, when you add multifamily and it's kind of depending what that ends up at, it might be like 4.8, somewhere around there, 4.8 or less. And, you know, in the, the comp plan, the 24 comp plan, the suburban like typology, there's a couple and I have it in my presentation, but because it's not here, the suburban typology says, it talks about a density between two and 10 units an acre. And then the, not, not mixed use or something more dense than suburban, and it was four to 17 in terms of actual residential. So we're on the low end of that density, which we feel like fits into Newcastle and the way we're even thinking about that drive in, that's a wider drive because we understand that that has to get to the, the back development. And Russell has developed that back development, so he doesn't want to make any neighbors upset and we don't want there to be congestion. We do want cars to drive slower. So when we narrow the streets, it's not the, you know, for the heck of it, it's because people drive as fast as they feel comfortable, like that's been proven over and over again. So it's not like, we want people to be driving 15 miles an hour through here. And let's see, well, I'm kind of.
If you unplug it and plug it back.
Do it again, try it again?
Yeah.
Throw it one more time. Let's see. So.
It's all in now.
It's all in now, can I press it?
It does.
Oh. Select to choose what happens. Run.
Sure.
Oh, didn't have a virus, yeah. It said run, it didn't do anything. Oh, I see something.
You have the presentation?
No, I don't.
Oh, it's popping up now. Here we go.
Okay, just hit the button now. Okay, I'll just do the, I'll just share the desktop.
Okay, great. So I think you've already seen, so this is an aerial rendering and you're really seeing kind of the northeast section. It kind of cuts off right at that creek there, so you're seeing probably two thirds of the development. And you can see this is still a neighborhood, largely a single family detached homes, just those, those lots vary in sizes because, you know, if you've got an 800 square foot lot and we're trying to introduce more affordable and attainable housing into this. But also, once again, in the kind of the back north, northeast corner, there's, these are our state lots that are quite a bit bigger. And if you kind of look down here in the bottom left of the screen is where you see what I would call like our neighborhood center, our village center. And so it doesn't take a whole lot to kind of create a place and sense a little destination. And you'll also see just lots of landscaping, lots of trees in here because it's really important to creating a place that people actually want to walk. So you guys know the location and about 80 acres. When we first started diving into this, the first thing we looked at was the 2040 comp plan to understand kind of where the city's at on this type of development. And we were really excited to see the 2040 comp plan because I feel like we could have put it in one of our pitch decks for the type of development we do. And so we've taken all these kind of values and principles and really we think about like infusing those into the plan. And, and so I even liked that it talks about shared values and preferences as a living document, provides a policy framework. And these are listed in no order, these pulled directly from that, by the way, the balanced growth and development, small town community charm, which we think about with this neighborhood. It kind of has that quaint American small town feel, family oriented, where it is a place for kids and where you could raise your family, opportunity for all, where we do have places for small businesses and small offices, environmental stewardship and resilience. And it's a really great use of land. And we still have lots of permeable area, we still have lots of green area, lots of trees. And so I think it's a really responsible use of, of land when we're developing like this and we're not just paving over everything. Accessible and equitable living, we've got lots of diverse range of income of housing typologies, safe and secure, cure community. I mean, these kind of communities really hinge on that. You know, you can put a gate on a community and that's one way to, to do that. And another way is what we call eyes on the street, you know? And when you orient the houses right and you, you invite people to walk around, you can create just an inherently safer community because people know who your kids are and when what's going on and who, you know, is walking around the neighborhood and hasn't been there. Cultural richness, and I think this is what's really fun about having a neighborhood center where you can bring in local businesses, not just for the community itself, but bring in other people around Newcastle. Because when you create that cool, you know, neighborhood center, people want to be there. Shared prosperity and educational excellence. Little last one. So Newcastle, this is also, you know, it's on a growth trajectory and, and growth generally, you know, it's hard to manage a city that's not growing, so growing is great. It also provides, you know, challenges, introduces challenges, but also lots of opportunities. And so the way we think about growth is, you know, managed growth and how do we want to grow? And traditionally that has been, you know, single family detached subdivisions and then to make up for it, big kind of apartment complexes and buildings and things like that. So we're just trying to integrate those a little bit and create this diversity of housing with this missing middle housing and provide a lot of housing to the new residents of Newcastle, particularly, what is it, the Okant, the, the new healthcare facility going in? Is that, yeah, when is that coming online?
Two years.
Two years, yeah. I really liked a couple of things in here, welcoming and family oriented community with a small town feel. Newcastle is an inclusive community with diverse and affordable neighborhoods, a range of employment opportunities, accessible multimodal transportation systems, which is going to be great for biking, walking in addition to cars, high quality, sustainable parks, open space and recreation facilities, great schools and educational opportunities. So I love the vision for it. And these were kind of the, the, the six different categories within, within the plan that I think we really adhere to all of these in terms of how you guys are thinking about land use, transportation mobility, the, the multimodal parks and recreation, having lots of parks, open spaces, housing, neighborhood and community character. And I'll show you some elevations here in a minute because they're, the developer's very committed to a high quality community. This is not a fast, let me slap it in and build it as fast as possible. You could do other developments faster. And this is, they're taking a phased approach and they've already spent a year, a year and a half in planning because they really want to do something really great that they can be proud of and Newcastle can be proud of. And, and, and just the walkability and kind of the outdoors that comes along with these kind of neighborhoods really contributes to the health. And they even like how you talk about, it's not just health, it's overall wellbeing across physical, emotional, financial, intellectual, social, spiritual, occupational, environmental aspects. And one of the favorite things I love about living in a walkable neighborhood is they just have so many loose connections. And my old neighborhood, not long ago, I was, it was a nice neighborhood, 7,000 square foot lots, and we knew my neighbor directly across from me and next to me. And like, that was it, because there was no ever reason to really run into anyone. But in the neighborhood we live in now, we have all kinds of loose connections and get to chat with people and it really feels like a community. And there's something life giving about that. That the 2040 plan also points out that interconnected street systems, it says, however, some new areas have been developed in isolation. And so that's what we're trying not to do is we're trying to create a more complete neighborhood. We can't like solve all problems within 180 acres. Yes, people are going to have to leave out of the neighborhood and go do things, go to work. But if you can spend more of your time within this neighborhood, I think we've really succeeded in a lot of ways. And then the, the plan also points out that development codes and regulatory consistency don't necessarily match up the 2040 plan yet, which is why we are doing a PUD. These were also in the plan of kind of visualized desired outcomes in the 2040 plans. You've got single family up top, you've got some multifamily housing, looks like duplexes, townhomes, fourplexes, some, yeah, I guess those are townhouses over there. And then also some nice streets on the mixed use, just showing mixed use. And I think we really like kind of the, the top three, top left three of this kind of more neighborhood feeling, um, commercial centers. And of course we want to have playgrounds and, and, and it's some beautiful topography around it too. And here's where I was pointing out in this bottom left, so this is the suburban residential where it's calling for a typical density of two to 20, two to 10 dwelling units per acre. And then on the urban residential, four to 17 dwelling units per acre. So we're in that 3.3, when you add in some apartments, we might be in the 4.7, 4.8. So we're right in that range of what the, the, the plan is calling for. And then also, you know, introducing some mixed use commercial into the neighborhood. When we get started on designing this, you know, we, we really study, you know, we walk the land, we study what's going on. So when you look at the layout of the neighborhood and you're like, why does it look so funky? Well, it's because this, this piece of land has a ton of topography to it, which there's some challenges to that, but there's a lot of opportunities. You can make a really interesting neighborhood and, and also we want to kind of, you could say, honor that topography rather than just kind of bulldoze it. And we, by the way, we also draw by hand because when you really start with this, it's really part art, part science. And we really want to kind of start with that art a little bit and then move into the science of it and getting all the details right, the turning radiuses right and everything. So when you see that to this, you can really see that topography laid out and then printed within the master plan. And this is kind of an older, you know, version than the plat. But I just wanted to point out, you know, the top, the different types of housing, our lane lots are a little bit bigger, the houses are going to be pulled off the street a little bit more, courtyard lots are a little bit smaller. And then we've got that, where the orange is, we've kind of got that village center, that town center, and you see multiple blocks of where elderly living is planned that can be integrated into the community. And, which is important for me, my grandparents kind of got stepped into kind of big nursing homes off somewhere when they couldn't drive anymore and I never really saw them anymore. That happened all for my grandparents. And so having elderly living within a community is not only important to us, but very important to the developers. I'm just going to walk through very quickly the different kind of types of lots we're, we're talking about and then we'll be done. So these village courtyard lots, these are smaller lots where there could be homes that are 800 square feet, 1,600 square feet, one or two story. And you can see how on some of these, we pulled the garage up to the front to kind of anchor the street and, because it's really about shaping space. And that's not always going to be the case. Sometimes the house will be closer to the street. But this is, this is not a rendering of this development, this is one of our other developments, but there's a lot of similarities to this. We're bringing even in this kind of single family detached neighborhood, the homes or structures at least closer to the street. And over here on the left side, we're using hedges to do that. It doesn't always have to be a building, it could be garden wall, it could be a brick wall, it could be landscaping. And all of this slows traffic down, invites people to be outside, come and walk. Our village lane lots are a little bit bigger and the houses pulled off from the street a little bit more. And this is actually what's planned on that entrance road. Our, these are the elevations for several of the houses. These are official architectural elevations with, with plans. So these are a few different elevations of different housing. The first five, they've gotten, we've gotten five done so far. So very pretty, traditional, very quaint cottage-like, you could say. This is just an example of kind of an intersection, is how we're thinking about laying out the lots. You can see how all of these, you've got space, you've got yard space, you've got private space, but you're also kind of shaping space along the street. These are our state lots, so these bigger ones, you might be thinking like, why in the world did you put a house off to one side? But there's some similarities to in Charleston. Now Charleston's more dense and we're not doing Charleston, but these kind of site where you anchor the, the side with a house and you can still have a drive and. where you anchor the side with a house and you can still have a drive and all this green space out back. And so it's a really interesting way to have these larger lots, still have tons of privacy land, you could have a pool back there, you could have a garden back there. But you're still kind of shaping this civic space, this urban, you know, more urban space. When we talk about small apartments, you know, you're just seeing kind of, hey, this is apartments in the plan, in the PUD and the preliminary plat. This is how we're thinking about it in terms of creating a cottage court of small apartments facing a grain, something very simple, beautiful, walkable. And elderly living, it's called HAFIA just because that's some precedent that we use of this type of elderly living that we really like of smaller homes. And of course, elderly, they could live anywhere in the neighborhood, but these are just intentionally built for that. And then this is our town center. So on kind of the bottom right of the screen, you've got townhomes. And then you've got several mixed-use commercial buildings and then some live works and all of this kind of one large-ish commercial space. But really the, kind of the magic, what happens here is, it looks kind of strange that you've got this village square and that's a street going through. But if you look at that red kind of view right there, I'm about to show you what that view looks like. And so a car can pass through here, but it's meant for people. And you're really enclosing the space, we even bend the, you know, the live work units around the corner, so you don't get this infinite sightline. So it really contains the space and it like slows people down. And you want to hang out there and have tables out there. And this isn't a lot of the development, but that is kind of the energy of the neighborhood all lives here. And also I think will be an amazing amenity for Newcastle in general for people coming in here. We've seen live works do really well. When I say live works, where it's just commercial on the bottom, you know, residential on top, where the offices might only be 600 square feet, but guess who needs office space? Lawyers, chiropractors, wealth managers, you know, where you don't need some big office somewhere, but you can have a little office space and people can come to your office. So that's largely what we're targeting with those. And this is the last slide, just the aerial. So I will leave it there.
So this commercial area is, what's the width of those structured or lots?
What is that in the PUD on, well, on the, are you talking about like the townhomes, the live works?
I'm looking at some stuff that looks like it's 13 feet wide.
I think we got, I think it's 18.
There's a 13 and an 18.
Yeah, 13 is the open space in between.
Okay.
Yeah, this would be like 18-foot lots connected as the townhome unit. But they're pretty.
So is that townhomes or is that the commercial area? I'm sorry. Kind of hard to tell.
Yeah, that, go to your commercial, yeah, these units here next to the cars, they're kind of live work and the townhome.
So that is what you're calling the commercial residential?
Yeah, anything kind of attached in here, we're kind of calling as one large commercial and.
And there's an area in there called private roadway? Talk to me about what that means.
Essentially, that's a private road for access for emergency services and any type of trash or stuff like that. But it's still a shared lane, but we had to maintain access to the development.
Well, that's right through that commercial area, right?
Right, because we're trying not to have a ton of like through traffic through the commercial area, but you can allow fire and trash.
I get that, right? I get that.
And when we get to plumery plat, you'll see all, you can.
And it's 46 feet, 45 feet wide, is that right, that private roadway? I'm looking at a call out.
The right, that's probably the right away or access easement.
Okay.
For it. Yeah, we try to maintain 20 foot for the road, but the actual right-of-way or access easement utility is 45. The city code's 50, so we knocked it to 45, but the lane itself for the roadway is 20.
And when my wife and I come down to the coffee shop, where am I going to park?
We've got on the site plan, which we do have an exhibit for, there is, and for all the commercial development, there's actually internal parking for that.
How many parking spots per, however you want to tell it?
One for 200 square feet that's written in the PUD. Basically it's a retail, city code's one for 200 for retail. So essentially we're holding the retail component as the parking requirement for that.
Usually a commercial is a little bigger than this, you agree?
Commercial in terms of the buildings?
Yes. So when you start talking about number of slots per square foot, it can be skewed, right? You understand what I'm saying? If you get small enough, you can still put five people in there getting coffee, right?
Right, true.
But if I'm going to the cute little dress store, right? It'll be a little bigger and I won't need as many parking spots.
Yeah.
Just ask it, right?
Yes, yes, a lot of averages, yes, sir. And also walkability, the goal is for that people to walk there.
That's the plan, right? I get that, yeah.
Pull up the site.
From where though? I mean, if you own a house in here, yeah, but there's no parking lot, I mean.
Well, there will be areas where there is street parking. And so in these commercial areas and stuff, we're going to have to build in some of that on the site plan. So I can promise you.
But you get where we're headed.
What?
Where we're having a problem, right?
Can you say what the problem is?
The problem is, is making sure that we have access to all what we need, right? If we're going to go down there and go to the coffee shop.
Right.
I got to have enough places to park.
Met.
But you don't want anybody outside the area, you and all the people from inside.
No, we want, we want people from outside the area too. And I will give an example of where I do live, there is not enough parking for the taco shop and the coffee shop. And guess what? People park along the streets and they get there, they're willing to walk when you create a destination and versus a big surface.
Have you ever been wrong? Have you seen how they park all those cars?
I have.
Yeah, any way they want.
That's not what we're talking about.
Well, I understand that, but that's what your concern is, or at least that's what my concern is. Go ahead.
Yeah, I can promise you, the developer is very experienced, wouldn't build things that he doesn't think people could get to, probably is the number one thing. And if you maximize for parking, there are downsides to that.
Well, absolutely, I get it.
And so.
It's much concrete, right?
Right.
It's not a green space, I get.
Right. So we want people to be able to get there and park and if they have to walk a couple blocks, I think we're okay with that.
We do have pocket parks, parking areas, especially for the commercial, there's parking. There's also for the multifamily, they're going to have parking areas as well that we have. And you could, I mean, if you want to go ahead and show them the, we're kind of not on that, obviously that item yet, but the site plan is an exhibit that's basically the plumery plat, which you've already seen with a lot more detail. So if you zoom in to the commercial, if you can get over there. So you see the commercial kind of upper left of your screen.
You see all this parking behind it.
So there are several parking lots, which is quite a bit for the amount of commercial on the, you know, the both sides.
So those skinny, those skinny buildings, at least on the first floor, is what, 1,300 square feet? So you double that, you're 2,600 square feet. So are we talking about 2,600 square feet divided by 200? Is that as many parking spots we got?
Not if it's residential upstairs.
What is it if it's residential upstairs?
One per unit.
Okay.
But it's, yeah, per one spot, per 200 square feet of commercial.
Yeah. So those need six and a half spots per unit.
Well, the building, if 1,300 square feet is the minimum for the lot area, but that doesn't mean the first floor is going to be 1,300 square feet for this. So they will probably be smaller than that.
Okay.
So based off, just for, you know, perception, based off the layout and the size of buildings, actually footprint drawn, the parking meets the one per 200 for the commercial and for the residential. So as you go through the, you know, and you could, you know, you could pan to the multifamily as well, we have little pocket areas of where you're going to have parking along the street. If you go south a little bit, yeah, well, there's, you know, all the multimese is going to have their own internal park and then you're going to have.
Sure.
Parking off the street, so.
And I think that's pretty good shape. Really, that commercial is what kind of got me kind of going.
Yeah, the plumery plat is not shown because it's private and it's just a lot.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
So you've got two lots essentially.
And for any other kind of the multifamily, whatever we kind of go to, like actually do a site plan on quote unquote, you know, multifamily lot or whatever, that's where you're going to have to, am I right in saying like you're going to build in the park?
Go to that same image on the plat and you'll see where the lot lines are a little bit easier, just go to the next sheet. Of course, we're not looking at that now, but you can see, so see how that commercial is just one big lot and then you have an access easement where the parking is?
Yes.
In the top left.
I see it, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, somebody else's turn.
In the general description, it talks about the access and there's different streets sizes and that all lots will have street access and some of them won't have frontage, but they'll have an access easement. What's that and where does that apply?
Okay, say that one more time. Not everything, not everything will have, oh, 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 I think I know. Yeah, yeah. So our, let me see if I can find it. Maybe, as you can see like up there, we're in points, sorry, kind of reach man, like right there, some of those homes were kind of facing an inner green. So if there's ever, we might call it like a pocket park where there's homes, you know, facing an inner green or something like that, so some of them might not have street frontage.
But there's still going to be parking for their cars.
Yeah, there's still the rule of one parking unit, one parking per unit.
But it does say, all lots within the PUD should be required to have access frontage on a public street, private street or access easement.
Right. So they can have.
Does that mean walking or driving?
An access easement could be walking.
These two here, they're inside.
Uh, I don't think those right there, the ones just up from you, but like right, right?
Right there.
There you go. Some of those might have some other.
Yeah, the site plan's got a little bit more detail.
Right.
But a lot of, a lot of, in these types of neighborhoods, homes facing onto like a pedestrian way, you know, rather than off a road, but like your front door is kind of on a pedestrian way are some of the most beautiful and kind of popular spaces and they might have congregated parking somewhere that you have to walk just a little ways to, no one's going to walk super far to their own house. So it's just, it's for things like that.
So that one right in the middle would be a good example where there's an access, a private access, like right smack in the middle of the plat?
Yeah, it was HAFIA.
Yeah. You know, about that.
And then if it's just an access for, you know, just to get to your house and make it basically a legal lot, if they don't have parking there, they'd have.
Right, there's parking.
Dedicated for each unit in the street next to where they're at, dedicated pockets of parking.
Somebody's going to have to haul that washing machine in their house, I'm telling you.
Start to do business. So you don't create growth and new businesses.
There you go.
It looks like we're basically gutting our code.
Yeah.
And so the only standard we have is in your plan. And it's somewhere I wrote down what it's called.
Architecture review board?
Well, there's not the review board, but they're.
Oh, what it's.
Planning.
That's a catchall review board?
Yeah. Oh.
That's what I said.
Yeah, they've got.
That's for style, like architectural.
Architectural design guidelines.
Or any use commercial. What's your booklet tells the company?
Handbook.
What's the first part of that?
The name of it?
Master Development Plan Handbook.
That's it?
Yeah.
It exhibits B in the PUD.
Yeah.
The majority of the PUD is that handbook.
I know you've looked at all of this, a whole lot more than I have, I can't do so because I've just been waiting. But anyway, that's where your standards are all going to be found to the extent they're, they exist. Otherwise, it's just your architectural review board, is that right?
To a degree, except, you know, we still have to have trash come pick up, we have to meet all the fire department where fire can get through and they have to evaluate all of this. The building permits, the IRC or IVC, we have to meet all of those types of requirements still, so ADA stuff.
And in the, in your PUD documents, that's called out. And PUD basically went through and eliminated our code sections and then has its own.
Yeah, we have to, I mean, get the, I mean, am I right, Janay's saying, I don't have the right word, would be getting fire, the fire marshal to kind of approve of this.
Well, when they do.
We have to meet the turning radiuses and all of this access.
Yeah, you can't deviate from anything.
Right, we're not, we're not breaking any laws, I guess is that, you know, we still have all kinds of laws we have to meet inherently and we do meet all of those.
Okay.
Health and safety, yeah.
But where is these years? In your PUD, there's a lot of provisions that do away with our ordinances.
Yep.
But there aren't, I didn't find all the replacements for them, nor did I find.
Yeah.
The ones for the fire department and that sort of stuff.
So.
Are they in there?
Yeah, yes, sir. So in section 6.0, development and subdivision variations, that's where we listed because to create that development, you just can't do it with the current code because it's just more for traditional developments, you know, larger lots area. So to create that, we had to go through line by line in the code and figure out what that plan did not meet and then vary it how we needed to make that happen. So there's a long list and these same variances are actually on the plumery plat on the left side, we had to rewrite those in there. So basically every time you, like for instance, the street minimum width is 26 feet. Well now, instead of 26, it's 20. The minimum radius for the curb is 25, is now it's going to be 20. And every time we did that, we listed what we changed every code. And then in the section of the PUD, we wrote in there for streets, minimum street width shall be, you know, 20 feet wide and four-inch curbs are allowed. You know, minimum access easements or right-of-way shall be 45 feet instead of 50, but that's all written further into the development in every section for access utilities, streets access for sidewalk access and everything else. And ADA is in there as well. Yeah, it was, there's a lot of, there's a lot.
There's a whole lot in there.
It's that whole list on the left side of the plaque, you'll see, that's the, basically the list of variants and things we had to change to get this to work with the current site.
And this is what we have to do for most walkable communities in most places when they have not yet updated their actual development codes, which some of them are in the process of doing, some of them are, some of them.
We thought we just did it, didn't we, the other day?
Yeah, we've looked at a whole lot of that, I tell you.
Be careful there, be careful.
We're just working on this one, so.
You could use this as a go-by, just.
It's opinion.
Yeah, a lot of communities, I mean, they have to create their own urban, like City of Edmonds is doing their own urbanized standards because they have the standards they don't want to change for the regular.
Oh, they're changing all of that now.
They are changing, they're going to reform base, but they were talking about changing, you know, just their downtown districts, it's going to be different standards because trash trucks, you know, you got to have 50 foot of space to pick something up and well, you know, think about having smaller trash, you know, it's just, there's too tight a space to meet all these standards that are in there for larger subdivisions. So I think it's very common to change that.
Right.
To meet something, to create something like this.
Well, yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm, it just is daunting.
Yeah.
To try to go through was a lot of work.
It's a different process. One of my favorite quotes, Steve Jobs says, you can't start with the technology, you have to start with the user experience and back into the technology.
Like a salesman.
And that's what we think about here. You start with the neighborhood that's the best use for the neighbors and the people living there, you know, and then you have to back into still meet fire codes and all these other things.
But have you included the things that you don't like about the neighborhood that you live in in here?
What'd you say?
Have you included the things you don't like about your neighborhood in here? The fixes, the things you would change, are they in here about your own neighborhood that you live in?
Like. I think.
So and so that street's not wide enough or there's, I, I don't know what they could be.
Right. I, I think it's just a different, you know, it's less dense, so there's just more green space. Um, so it's, it's really a different neighborhood than, than, than I currently live in.
But the.
But we, we built something where we're designing something that we would love to live if we were living here. That makes sense.
Like you said, it's daunting. There's so many things in here. You just don't know if you agree with every little bullet point or that everyone works. And you've gone through the code and nitpicked it and changed everything, but you know, in practice, okay, I guess it works, but maybe it doesn't and.
Can, can I ask you a concern of what might not work?
I don't know. There's 150 things here. I don't.
When did you send it to them? How long we had it?
I don't know.
For three days.
Three days. Believe it, we're gone for years and a half. I, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. That is, it's been very intense going through it.
So just to reiterate what Dean said, C E C under section six, and I've just been going through it again, but everything, it states that, um, if a sub paragraph is omitted in the document, it shall follow the local regulations. So what they did is they went through, like Dean said, line by line, you can see, uh, 153046, uh, T, four inch high mountable curb and gutter shall be allowed, private roadway easement to be.
Well, what's the different why? What, I mean, what's the variance from a six inch to a four inch? Why? Why, why does that variance need it?
Just aesthetics.
Cause we want it.
That's what I'm saying. Like.
A T inch, we want it.
It looks pretty, I'm just asking the question, cause I haven't looked at all this. What are the whys to all of these things?
Yeah. And so, I mean, we can go line by line, but like for drainage, like we had some variance to the drainage that we took out. Um, just to make it a little easier to design, but we still have to meet the drainage criteria. We still have to convey the water. We still can't, you know, we have to convey the streets, we have to detain, all that has to be met.
Right.
Which makes it a little bit more challenging without the variances, but we stripped those out. Uh, so we still have to meet the drainage criteria. We still have to meet fire code, uh, fire access. Uh, commercial area has to have, you know, sprinkled systems and buildings over telethaus first, we still have fire mains, hydrants. You still have to have, um, you know, access for the fire vehicles. And we did a, we did a vehicle turning through the whole thing to verify that we can meet all that. So, uh, utilities, we still have to have all public and private, or sorry, public water, public sewer. Um, you know, dry utilities. So we, we had to really, we initially had a 35 foot right of way and then we extended it up to 45. Cause trying to fit all the utilities in there, trying to fit as much in the back as we could. But to fit everything in there, we say, we need some more space to see what and couple of that. So like we gave them some more space to work within there. And then the good thing is, is behind, and it doesn't really show in the site plan, you can kind of see a little bit better. But, you know, they're behind all the, really the units, there's all this open space that can, that's kind of taken place. It's, it kind of meanders through there. So we go able to fit some sewer lines in the back of the lots to keep them out of the streets. You know, all those spaces in between those units is, is, it's like an open space area that's walkable and they'll have trails and connectivity and all that. But we're utilizing those as also not access and utilities, but also walkable areas. So we try to come up with basically where you goes going and maintain your utilities, you have to root work. You know, you can get to it, you know, we connected all the open spaces with right of way. So if you had to go get that easement, you don't have to go with someone's backyard. You can do it within the common open spaces that haven't been taken out fences. So all that was intentional, um, and we worked with the city on that.
And that makes sense.
Yeah. So we went to like all in like the radiuses of the streets, we had to change those because of, you know, if you do like a hundred foot radius, you know, this would never work. So we had to change the radiuses of the street minimums so we could kind of fit in, kind of create the vision that, that, uh, that Thomas and Austin had come up with. And with, you know, with, I guess the, you know, the, the speed limit, obviously it's really limited by the width and the area you can actually drive through. Um, what else would there be? I mean, drains, we talked about, um, you know, setbacks, we kind of changed this for the kind of look and feel of it. You know, that's, that's not really much for, uh, you know, infrastructure wise, but and, and all of his setbacks are kind of intentional based off of their lot lines and their plate, their, sorry, their floor plans and how they fit on a building. Like for instance, they have a U in the front and then a A U in the back. Well, there's all this open space in between, but in, in the code, we have to say, okay, zero lot line in the front and a five foot setback in the back. Although that may shift around a little bit, but based off of their floor plans with the various, cause they have a ton of different floor plans and different options. You know, to say this, what the setbacks are for that type of residential is tough, you can't, but it's gonna vary. So we had to kind of go with the worst case scenario on that. So that's why a lot of these variances are in there as zero lot line in the front. Although we know that we're gonna have to probably put a five foot utility easement where there's storm and water on the same side of the street. So then there's gonna be five foot automatically. And I think they're gonna vary that as they go through it with all their different types of units that come in. So yeah, for us, it was tough to kind of fit in with their vision and how they, the units were fitting. We just had to go, kind of go through and just, anything that didn't meet it, we had to just say, hey, let's, let's, we need to vary it slightly. But we did cover, we didn't leave anything out. Like we didn't, like say this part of the code is not, you know, uh, accessible or, or not valid anymore. We just changed it to meet that layout, if that makes sense. But yes, there is a lot of, there's a lot of differences than what their standard code is.
One area that I noted was the, uh, no tangent, tangent length between, uh, reverse curves on major ore collector streets, which means you aren't gonna have anybody deliver furniture or move across country and have their furniture brought in here. Or have a container brought in here on a front. Can, can you read those corners if, if you don't have a tangent?
We did, we did vehicle movements with a fire truck to get through and.
You've done that?
Yeah, we did. It's one of the, uh, requirements when we went through the city review process with W S B. So we did a vehicular tracking of all the main roads. And, you know, a lot of the streets are straight. They wind a little bit. There's always certain one, and that's the thing.
I didn't see a real reverse.
And see, there's one in there, but we had to put it in the code because we didn't meet it for that one area, but it doesn't mean they're everywhere. So that's, and that's a challenge. We, we have one location that, well, we have to write it in here.
The Marygold Lane?
Yeah. But, but you can see most of them are pretty, I mean, they wind or, you know, they're nice.
But there's topography, you know?
Yeah. But there's, yeah, the one at the far north, really, there's, there's a couple there where they wind a bit. Um, very far north center where, you know, that, that was kind of where we had to write that variance in for it, so. Was a traffic study done and I'm, I'm a little bit ignorant to this with street parking. We, so we're, we're not allowing street parking just off the street. There'll be designated parking areas along the street, but not 20 foot right street, you can't park on the street.
Right, that's.
Yeah, correct. Yes, sir.
But we might have some street parking because we've got a 45 foot right of way and we're designing sections. There might be areas that have street parking there, but there still has to go through all the.
But it won't, it won't block the 20.
Yeah, yeah. It's completely out of the 20 foot.
It's kind of off street.
Yeah, it's off, it's off street parking from a planned perspective.
Yeah, it's in right of way parking, but it's not on street. Like we just pull up and park, you have to pull up off street, but it's next to the rest of the road. Yes.
Yeah.
And we, speaking of traffic, we did do a, you know, T I A on the thing, but that was more for the intersection and the front, which, you know, didn't, or based off of all the traffic, we didn't, didn't require like signalization of what's there. So.
There'll be some tickets on Bellevue and Oak Street intersection.
Which ones are?
Cause there'll be people pulling in there to get their coffee from across the neighborhood and they're gonna drive over here, cause it's 35 degrees outside.
Right here. Right here. We're gonna drive from over here and park right in front of this house and then I'm gonna get a ticket.
Might only do it once.
Cause you say no parking on the street, but I don't know where the.
See, some of those, see, some of those might have, you know, like we might build in street parking on, on some of that, so.
There's a lot of maybe stuff going on.
Yeah, there's so many details here. I mean, I guess, I guess items not in, have to do with replating or rezoning and whatever, but it's items 11 and 12. Or no, 11 is what, talking about the plat, right?
Yeah, I guess this item is still just the land use and the P U D.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're still.
So I, I guess from my view.
Which everything in that P U D is so shown on that preliminary plat, all of.
Yes, yes.
All of the.
But I'm saying to approve or deny number nine has nothing to do with all these details. That's really number 11.
Well, it does. That's what I'm saying. It, it really does because they had to, to do that to get the variations, not just on that preliminary plat, because it was such an in-depth.
So you're saying the amendment to the, the land use?
The PUD.
No, 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 no. Number nine doesn't have the PUD in here, right?
Correct. The land use is just.
That's my point.
Yeah. Just the land use, then the P U D, and then the preliminary plat. But in the P U D, under six point O, it talks about all of the development and subdivision variations. In the PUD itself.
Yeah. I have no doubt this is coming to a place near me. Okay. No doubt. But it's just gonna take us a while to digest.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I mean, on number nine, just addressing the land use. I'm not sure that the city is really ready to open up the area that this will open up for dense development.
Would you call this dense?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, 3,000 square foot lots, the smallest is 6,000 and that was a variance from 7,200.
I was just gonna point back to the.
No, we don't need to see that. We've already seen it. We've already seen it.
All that.
But we talked about it then too, I promise you.
But all.
I didn't get to write that either.
All the units together.
Right, but I mean, the developer is investing hundreds of thousands.
We understand.
You know, rely on what's written, you know, and there's a you know, what, what do you rely on if you have to go through a year and a half and then at the end find out you can't rely on that?
Should've come talk to us.
I did.
We have a sketch plan.
We talked to you.
I know.
But the density is actually not dense. It's 4.7.
Right.
It's an acre. A typical subdivision in Windermere, that's five or six. So the actual density is much less than your standard residential subdivision. It's just, it has pockets of density and a bunch of open space. I mean, you go to the land plan, there's this huge open space area where the ponds are at. There's big fields, go to the, the estate lots, there's these huge courtyard areas with all this open space that you're not, we have pockets of open space. So overall, the density is much less than just your standard five, six, 7,000 square foot typical neighborhood. All the green that's.
7,200 for our standard lot.
Yeah.
And we probably aren't gonna go any smaller than that for residential developments anymore. And the density that I'm, or the thing that I'm talking about is once we go this here, there's everything from Willow Drive to 24th Street to Ted Wells beside you there and north of him that are all opened up for apartment, high density residents, because part of this is a lot more dense than, or whatever.
Is this less dense than the Grove?
Probably not, but the groves down here beside Windermere. And I just, I mean, we don't have sewer there. And one thing that you're gonna get hit with is sizing your lift station to drain the area that it'll, to serve the area that'll drain. I don't know that you did stuff.
We did a plumery design already and we got it to size right.
For your development or for the area?
No, for, to serve this community, we did a lift station design, uh, not fine plumery design to make sure it worked. And basically we had a lift station in the center, uh, basically south area. It's gonna pump all the way to, to the, uh, east down the gas station. There's a, uh, gravity main that we can connect to there. And we also checked the capacity of the sewer system.
Just drawn on here by the phone.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, sir. Yeah.
Yeah.
So yeah, the sewer, to serve this community, that's another big investment, we'd have to do a lift station, which is not gonna be a cheap endeavor.
Well, when we did Fox Hollow, we asked the developer there to size the pit for the drainage area.
Yes, yeah.
And not just your development, but like I'm saying, that goes over to Willow Drive south to the Crescent, half miles out. And then a good share of Otis land there will drain into this basin.
There's part that can drain, yeah, and that would be sized to handle any future development. Yeah.
Yep.
Based off drainage basis.
So.
But we looked at it from, you know, just to say that, hey, the lift station would work. We, we did do a plumery design and size the lift station and got to make sure that depths would work and, you know, everything else.
I noticed it, it shows it draining across 37 on a board.
Yes, sir.
Have you got the easements on the south side for that yet?
No, we've, um, well, that would be, there's, if you stay in the right of way, um, there's an easement that connects to, um, Country Club there, I believe.
I think they, they aren't gonna wanna use that easement very bad or the public easement very bad because they don't wanna have the city replace it later. That's to be discussed later.
Yeah.
At a different stage of your process.
Yeah, if we get through that, then all those, you know, O, O dot permits for boring, utility permits, that all has to be, and of course it's an application. But yeah, all that's been thought of. Um, you know, check the water capacity of the whole water system. We did a big water model for, it has capacity, sewer has capacity. So we went through all that, um, for the, for the plumery plat section of it.
Those questions are all legal with the, on down the road. The item nine, we've heard discussions. Anybody have any more questions?
Not to relate to that, no. I mean.
Well, let's just look at item nine then. Oh, hell, let's ask for public comment. Do we have any public here that's not with you?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Well, you don't count either. You're the city. You wanna comment?
I would love to actually.
Okay.
Um, and I don't normally, so it's kind of, kind of rare for me to ever talk. As you pointed out, I, I work for the city, um, and I have a couple of different jobs. I do I T and I also do P R for the city. And one of the things I struggle with when I try to do P R is looking for places that, uh, are beautiful in Newcastle. And I usually say it's either I have to take pictures close up or I have to take pictures far away, cause a field is beautiful from a distance. And it's beautiful right up close, looking at the wheat, looking at stocks of wood, looking at the natural flowers on the, as you drive past. But architecturally, not a lot. And I hate to be, I hate to sound like that. But I go over here in the neighborhood right next door. I mean, you know, it's the same neighborhood. You see, we got 142 platted locations in Newcastle, I think. And, um, there's not a lot of originality and maybe that's fine. Maybe that's, maybe that's okay, you know? But this looks cool. This looks like a place, like he pointed out, this is a mix of, of residence, business, a mix of perfec, business professionals, attorneys.
Attorney's gonna need more than 600 square feet, I'll just.
Well, what I'm saying is it, it, it can be whatever. When we get this hospital, we're gonna have a mix of people that, that wanna work here in town. And I mean, it's fine to have your, your standard suburban neighborhood. And it's fine to have your little homestead out in the middle of nowhere too. Pedros or the Oaks or, or, uh, uh, things like this. But this is something, I think there, I think there's, I mean, I, I haven't done it. I haven't done lick of research. I don't know what the hell I'm talking about here. But this is unique and, and I realize it's only been three days and you guys have seen it. So maybe there is more thinking to be done. Uh, but it, it does sound like something that provided it's engineered and provided that all the questions are answered. It's something that's interesting, that's beautiful, that's worth trying. I mean, cause I, I, I don't understand the, the notion that we just do. And there's not, I have no problem with the neighborhood right next door. It's great. Great place to start a family, great place to live, but this is, this is unique and different and awesome. And, and I could go there and take all kinds of wonderful pictures and promote Newcastle and how here we have this and we have that. And we have a, a rich mix of, of things and it's not just like one, and I'll shut up quick, cause I, I, I know you didn't expect me to talk. More. I always used to say, I, I live in more and I always used to say, that's the place between Norman and Oklahoma City. Not much interesting for a long time till they tornado came through and allowed them to renovate. But that's what I always saw it as, as a kid. I would say, that's the place between here and there. And I feel like we don't wanna be just the place between here and there. We wanna be. And I feel like we don't wanna be just the place between here and there. We wanna be Newcastle. We wanna be something that's meaningful and interesting and not just that place that's not in Oklahoma City. That's my two cents on it. So thank you.
I was just gonna harass you for a second.
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
One time I'll have you come up to my place.
Okay.
Maybe fifty acres.
Yeah.
But I got a house on a pond that you can take a real pretty picture of.
All right. I'd be happy to. I always am looking for stuff like that.
And as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
I'd like to see it all developed.
Okay.
Little piece of area.
Twenty-seven sections, too.
Yeah.
Wait, you had twenty-seven sections?
Yeah. I grew up on a ranch.
That's.
Didn't own it all. Family didn't own it all.
At least.
But anyway, the, but the other part is, go up into Russell's Riverview Estates.
Mm-hmm.
You can take some fine pictures up there.
Where, where in it again?
Oh, Riverview.
Yeah, it's, it's sort of like this, but bigger. It's like if you cranked a knob that tweaked it up plus two. But it's nice. It's very nice, but it's not, it's not unique and original and different. It's just that plus, you know, crank up.
All this is all conjecture.
Oh, sure. Yeah, and I.
We can show you places. There, we, we.
We're giving us ideas of what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
We know what we're not gonna do.
Yeah.
We're not gonna follow the rules. We're gonna have a whole nother set rules, which is okay. I mean.
As long as there's rules.
Let's lay them out, right? But at the end of the day, we really don't know what these dwellings are gonna look like.
Not yet.
All we know is they're gonna be forty percent brick and sixty percent, whatever they want it to be, as long as it's some kind of party board or whatever.
Hey, thank you. I appreciate it.
No, I saw those, but those aren't built.
But, but that's usually not kind of part of the.
Yeah, that's right.
What'd you say?
So you can say that about every.
Absolutely.
Right, that's what I mean. I mean, planning, planning commission doesn't.
They got hundreds of those right there.
But the handbook does give guidelines of like what materials and.
Forty-sixty is what I heard.
But the architecture board has to approve all these based off of this thing booklet of, you know, materials and styles and all that. So there is thought and there's guidance in here that the architecture board has to follow, so it can't just be, you know, some random modern house without this tradition. You know, it's gotta mix in this thing style that they got.
Is the architecture review board set already? Are there members for it?
Yeah, I mean, it'll be primarily our development company. We will be building every home out there, so there's not gonna be a concern of somebody buying a lot and not adhering. You know, we have the vision. We are, you know, almost every single plan will be unique to the lot. And so you're talking a huge investment, and so, you know, this isn't a, a small.
It's not a cookie cutter kind of thing.
Right, it's not, it's not a cheap thing. And so there's gonna be style and character and architecture to it, that it's not gonna be, you know, a replicated home, you know, fifty times.
Well, now, we went, we went for a, the Wheeler District. Now, Wheeler District is cookie cutter.
It, it's not cookie cutter. There are sections that are themed.
Sure looked a whole lot alike.
It's, I think most of those, they use the same architect for a lot of their stuff that we do.
There are certain sections, like the townhome section, that, you know, where they kind of repeat the same, the same thing. I would also argue that that could be, I was once told that people don't hate cookie cutter, they hate bad cookies. Everyone likes cookies. And so if you have good architecture, like some of the greatest cities or towns or neighborhoods in the country, in the world, are filled with very similar types of architecture, but they're just really well done. And, and that's what these communities are. That's what, the details really matter in these types of communities, and that's, I mean, you've got a developer that's committed, you know, one, a year and a half already, and committed to developing the whole thing. You know, there's a lot of care that goes into this. Like, we actually care about what we're doing.
That's why I asked about the ARV.
Yeah.
Because if it's set already and there's something in writing, and if it's, if the people who are on it are already on it and set, I, from the, from representing the city, would want to make sure that there's something in writing that says, these are the standards we're following, more than just what's written down here, but also the, the verbiage that's used is encouraged versus not allowed. And so the encouraged elements, I would wanna make sure that there's, there's some, some meat to the bone to make sure that the houses that would go there are nice, and it's not, the ARV is not replaced in a couple of weeks by the cookie cutter homes that nobody likes. And, and that's, that's my concern from the city, is that we're not allowing all of these deviations to say you can build all of these, you know, houses, and then later a green space gets redeveloped, so that instead of, you know, right now, the, my first inclination on this was a three thousand square foot lot is way too tiny and unrealistic, but because you're changing the concept of this neighborhood, you're not having one person who has a front yard and a backyard. You're having ten people who have a yard that they're sharing. Is that?
On some of them, yeah.
That's.
Or, or it's a smaller yard, you know, it's a quarter.
Or your, or your yard is down the street, and then you have this green space
Right.
for your kids to play tag in, or this green space over here.
Right.
So I think that the overall, yes, I agree. I think this is a great way to change the perception of, of what a neighborhood could be. Is it a place I would live? No.
Right.
But it's not for everybody.
Right.
Five acres is not for everybody. Fifty acres isn't for everybody. It's, it's allowing the idea of a different community in a place where there's not anything like this, just like I wouldn't live in Wheeler. If I gave me the house, I wouldn't live there, just because it's, and I, I think that the concern that I have is if this, if this were to get allowed and God forbid a fire breaks out in the commercial district, but the fire truck can't get to it because there's too many cars parked in the street and it can't navigate the turns, then that falls on the city, that falls on me. And so that's my concern with this of not having enough parking dedicated where there's enough cars, because you've got one per dwelling, but if you, if your family, you might have three cars, because you have a husband, a wife, and a kid, or two kids, and then you have four cars. And I get the law of averages, but you still have a husband, a wife, and Newcastle, everybody has to drive because the closest thing to drive to is a Walmart, and it's still a mile away from this place, but it's ten miles away from me. So I think that is the, at least, I'm, I'm not gonna speak for everybody, but that's the concern I see from somebody who's representing the city.
Right. Those are great comments. A few things I would kind of respond to. This is not for everyone, and I completely understand that, like, and, and I think that's the intent. We're actually doing something for certain people, and that means it's not for other people. And I think things like this actually protect the people that want five acres and fifty acres, 'cause I can promise you, like, or from my experience growing up in Houston, and when the suburb was still the ideal of the suburb, we kind of lived in this neighborhood and there was all this land around. We'd go biking for ten miles down the bayou. By the time I got back from college, there was no land left. It was just a concrete jungle forever, and it's just continued. And so in some ways, I kind of think of these more walkable neighborhoods as a way to protect the suburbs. And so it's like, if growth needs to happen, or at least that's kind of my perspective of just a city without growth is very hard to manage. You know, well, you can do that with big apartment buildings, and I think those should exist in places. I, I'm supportive of those in places, but also I wouldn't wanna live in one of those. You know, I wanna live in something like this, and I'm willing to have a smaller house for my kids to be able to run free, and I can go play sports in the park and not to make plans, you know? And, and I know the people that live in my neighbor, the neighbors I've lived in that are like that, they absolutely love it. They're fanatical about it, and they would never move out of Wheeler. And so I, I think that's okay, you know, to like build, like, I appreciate you saying that, like, building for people. In terms of, you know, the parking minimums, the thing that's happening across the country right now, and I wouldn't say it's everywhere by any means, people are getting rid of parking minimums, 'cause they realize cities should not be involved with creating parking minimums. I, I get that might be controversial saying that here, but no store owner, no developer. I'm a developer, too. I'm a CPA by an oil background, by the way, so I understand numbers. I'm not going to build a building if I don't think people can get in there. It will go out of business. But I do know from firsthand experience, if you create a beautiful place and a destination, create kind of the right culture and feel around it, people are willing to deal with a little bit of a headache of parking. Not a major headache with parking, but a little bit. In terms of a Twenty-Fifth Street and parking on the street, you know, that, that will absolutely have to be strictly enforced in terms of not allowing that. But also, you know, I don't think it does fall in the city because we are meeting the fire code and the fire lanes and the access. And so if something happens, 'cause someone parked, I, I, I guess perhaps the attorney could answer that better than I can. But I don't think that comes back on the city or on, you know, planning commission or something like that. Is that accurate to say?
Yeah, legal liability wise, I agree with you, but I think he's talking more just conceptually.
Yeah.
Well, I would say personally, I don't, I'm not opposed to the concept, and to have something different is, is fine. Newcastle, I keep hearing Newcastle is the fastest-growing city in the state, and third, whatever, even without something like this. And when the hospital comes, it's gonna be twice the pop, half the population of what Newcastle currently is, employment at the hospital. Those people will use something like this. I get it. I think it's the details that we're concerned about. It's basically rewritten all of the code to, to do this, and we've had it for three days. I think voting on the rezoning is fine, but I think we need more time to go over what all's been changed. That's where I'm at.
Yeah.
'Cause I just can't wrap my head around fifty-two items or however many things have been changed and say, yeah, let's go. I'm good.
On the on the amendment to the land use. I, I mean, I think this has potential. Russell's money. He wants to do it. And, and it's, it has potential. And as Newcastle grows and changes, it may be the diamond in the place. I'm, it, it fits our community enough. We oughta have a spot for it. This is a spot that would work. I, I guess that's I, I'm willing to send this to this council with a caveat. We recommend this subject to you wanting to open up this part of the city, because I don't know they want it yet. And so I'm, I'm gonna make it.
Can you, can you expand on that last phrase that you made regarding the city, wanting? I need to understand what you're trying to say, Gordon. I don't know.
Well, we don't have the infrastructure there yet.
Okay.
And, and we're talking about using a lift station that.
Sure.
For this segment.
There's dollars that's gonna be put in the ground to make this work. I'm sure.
And I don't think, I don't know that the city's ready at this time to spend the dollars to do that. Now, it's not gonna be as much as it would be, because the city's not gonna run the sewer line on West to this area. But if, if, if we say you can develop this and you can put the sewer line into this point, and we'll take it, then there's a lot of other developers out there that will get the same treatment of saying, you put the sewer line to this point, to this lift station, and we'll let you do it.
They don't have to carry it across their whole perimeter? It's like they do with water?
Well, that's knocked out of there, I believe.
I mean, those are just details we don't know about. That's what I'm saying.
That's not in the amendment, I don't see.
No, no, this amendment would just say you can have.
This is just saying that we can do this mixed use.
Right.
That's really.
That's all number nine is.
That's all number nine is. And I think it's just.
Nine is.
Whether we encourage this to go on or not, and I'm willing to put that to the city. I guess I kind of wanna tell them, we recognize this requires your decision more than ours, but here it is, and we, we think it's okay.
Number nine?
Yeah.
Yeah. Redoing the use didn't bother me.
Okay, I'm gonna make that motion, and I make a motion that we recommend the city council approval of item number nine, which is the amendment of the land use map. Per the application. Recognizing that the true decision for this change will require commitment of the city to the, for denser development in this area than is in the current comprehensive plan. And I just want to say, we, we know you've gotta be behind this, and we aren't telling you to go do it. Or do you wanna leave that, give an amendment motion to?
I, I, I'm indifferent to that part. I'm fine with telling them whatever you wanna tell them. I think that's fine.
Okay, I'll go motion in a second, all in favor, be unanimously passed. And then that puts us up to item knock ten, which is the rezoning from the original PUD to this PUD. And Will, did you, I mean, do you wanna vote on that, or do you wanna ask for more time?
I'd like more time to go over all the stuff. I mean, I think there's gonna be more details in some of this layout that we might wanna suggest changes to, but, I mean, there's the changes. I can't read that. I gotta zoom in on here on the machine and spend time going through that to even know what's been said. And I feel like going PUD to PUD, we're just, we're blanket approving. We don't even know.
Well.
At least I personally, I haven't had time to see it. So.
Well, I've been through part of it, but I haven't got.
Y'all can vote, and I'll.
And I know you've been working on this a long.
Yeah, well, if you needed more time, like, what are you looking at? When's the next planning commission meeting?
December.
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
It's December the fifteenth.
Fifteen.
We moved it up because of all of this.
And then that would push council if it did go forward.
Council on January twelfth.
Instead of December eighth.
Correct.
So it'd go, it would push it back a month if we, and the alternative is to take the vote, which we just take the vote and go to council, but.
Yep, that's, that's the other option.
That's the only other option. But for you guys to have time to look at it, I mean, you're gonna need, you'll need to the next planning commission meeting.
Well, I mean, some of these guys really work, and I've found that being retired hasn't given me any more time to. I would, I would say that if we take more time, we should get your packet to the council members, because they're gonna have the same problem we've got.
Yeah. Yeah, that was the intent, to try to get this out so people can look at it. We didn't realize it was only gonna be three days you guys had to look at it. We thought. So that's where, that's where kind of the timing was off a bit. But if you guys need time, that's the thing. We wanted this to be out there so everyone could look at it, so we could address the.
Yeah, well, we, we don't think the idea's a bad idea. We, we just wanna make sure all the details.
That's where I'm at.
And we're happy to do calls, you know, like, to answer questions and stuff like that on a quorum and all that or something, or, you know.
Certainly, whatever.
The, the meeting act or whatever, but only two people or something could be in a meeting, right?
Yeah, we, we know that. We just need to digest it.
Right.
Right? It's a big sandwich, and we haven't got through the first two bites.
So we're good with continuing to the next planning commission. And doing that, council members can now view the documents, correct?
Council's already, when this planning commission packet goes out to
They get it.
the commissioners, all the council members receive the planning commissioner packet.
So now they have to.
They, they got.
We just had to get. So what triggered it is the notice to get on.
The kicker is, is make sure they dig into it, too.
Got you.
Because they're gonna, I mean, normally, they aren't starting now to get ready for their December meeting.
Yeah.
But if they know this is a.
They need to digest it.
This is a big veil of AD.
Yeah, go check this item out.
And, and get on board or not on board, so we know.
So if we, you'll be, if we request a continue to be to the, you said December?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth. Good with that. Give them time to look at it and then address any questions, and that, and also the city council can look at it as well. In the meantime, set up meetings and kind of work things behind, you know, personally with each council member if we need to.
I will say, Will, everything that's on that, those notes that are in the preliminary plan is all listed in the plan as well, so you don't have to look. So all of, it's under section six.
I think I saw the list of that.
Yeah, section six of the PUD outlines everything that has been buried, chapter one fifty-three, which is the subdivision.
What section six is.
Of the PUD.
Also.
So I think we'd like to, to give you guys time to look at the documents and dive a little bit further into it. I think it's, it's fair to give.
Yeah.
You just, just request a continue to the next planning. You just, just request a continuance to the next planning commission meeting. That way.
If you do that, I, I recommend that for a couple of reasons, including what you just were talking about. Is give you some.
Yep.
Time.
And then if you guys have, obviously y'all can, can y'all give Janay questions or how does that work from a?
Janay can do that. Individually, I'll call Janay.
Okay, good.
Cause ideally if we could come prepared if there's issues or questions so that we don't have to do that December fifteenth. As in like work out issues that we can note, talk about it ahead of time.
I don't know. I can't promise you anything.
No, but not asking for promise.
But, but the goal is.
That if you have questions, if you will.
Okay.
But the goal is by the time it comes back here on December fifteenth, any issues we will have worked out. If it's a language here or there, if it's this or that, whatever we're looking at. The goal is to have it where, you know, that document, if, if everyone agrees or, you know, Russell agrees, then that would be, um, something you guys had all had input in and could honestly say, hey, yes, council, we approve this. Um, you know, make the final decision when it goes to council. And then they have time also to give comments as well since they now have the documents, of course.
And I'm happy to meet with any one of you in person. If you want to come schedule a meeting, I can do a team's meeting. I can meet with you in my office. I just can't meet with more than two of you at one time. And so I would say that all the questions and everything, because that counts per requirements for, um, when we have to have our agenda done, it has to be posted at forty-eight hours, twenty-four, twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. And so.
This is gonna be on it.
Yes, this, right. Well, this will be, this will be on it. We already know because it'll be continued to that date specific. But what I'm saying is to give staff enough time, please contact me as early as possible. You know, the week before I need to have that agenda done, you know? So we could make any, I can go back and forth with the applicant and, uh, the developer to address any of those concerns. And we could get it done prior to that meeting date.
Right.
If, if you so wish.
Yeah, I, I think we should try to go through it so we get information to you well before. Either in little bits, every time we have a question.
Yeah.
Or in a, with sufficient time for you to get with the design team and say, they had these questions. Be ready to come, either, either show them what you changed or be ready to come tell them they're dumb. And, you know, we handle that fairly well. Uh, with your consent and your, and we, and we have to turn it on you for a request so that our time doesn't run. With your request that this be continued for our convenience.
Yes, we'd like to request the continuance to the December fifteenth planning commission meeting.
Uh, I make a motion that this matter be continued to the December fifteenth planning commission meeting. Uh, and that we review this during the pending period. And get questions to Janay on any matters that we want to see addressed or have additional information on.
I'll second.
I have a motion in second all in favor, be unanimously passed. We thank you.
Thank you.
And then the eleven.
Yeah, so you'll have to, same thing on item eleven for the preliminary plaque. Now, you already did approve the land use.
Yeah, number, number nine got approved.
Yes, sir.
Number nine got approved. We've recommended that. We'll get some feedback on that the first of December.
So the same thing for item eleven?
Will, uh.
You're gonna make the same motion for number eleven year.
Yeah, for item eleven, we'd like to request a continuance to the December fifteenth planning commission meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Items ten and eleven are the ones that I was continuing.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so your same motion because they're separate items, so I'll put it down two times.
Yeah. Well, let's vote on it a second time. On item number eleven, I'll make the same motion at a second all in favor, unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Hang around for a minute. It'll be pretty short.
No worries. I will be out. Yeah, I'll be out here. Just come grab it.
Uh, item number twelve is possible action setting our twenty-twenty-six meeting dates. Yeah, because it takes care of us on that.
Just the last page, just the ten, November and December, you can kind of sign. Probably like how we're doing it this year. And I put you at twenty to twenty-six calendar year.
Oh, good. Uh.
You know, the twenty-third is like the week of Thanksgiving, so I think we had decided last year some might be gone. So if you want to do it on November the sixteenth for November.
Uh, that's great.
November what?
Sixteenth.
Kind of like this year.
Yeah.
Okay. So November, we're gonna do sixteenth. I guess we gotta vote on this.
Let's get them both and we'll vote them all together.
Okay, yeah. And then December, um.
Fourteen?
Fourteen.
Well, the fourteenth would be council meeting that night, the second Monday, or yeah, second Monday. That's the song.
We can bring it up an hour if we wanted to.
You could, yeah.
You want to do it in front of her or behind it?
In front of it. We can sing it to them.
Okay. You're gonna be going early in November anyway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and, and normally in December, we aren't.
That mean you drew records?
Yeah.
No, we're gonna be done in an hour.
Well, we aren't. We'll go over in the little room.
I did.
Is that, I mean, and the other thing we can try to do, it's on the twenty-eighth, but.
Or you could do the twenty-first. I know that's the week before Thanksgiving or most people are, are gonna be gone. At noon or.
Actually.
Twenty-first would be easier than the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, that would be better than right after Christmas.
Yeah, certainly for me. Do we want to do it on the twenty-first then?
Of November or December?
December.
Yeah, that's fine.
So December twenty-first?
Council's on the fourteenth.
Right, yeah. The only other one is May, but I just left it, uh, for sure because Memorial Day is that last Monday, the twenty-fifth. So, yeah, the week before.
So the twenty-first is the week of Christmas, so it would be either the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth would be the fourth.
Right.
Yeah, nobody wants to do anything between business and New Year's.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just saying, nobody wants to do anything.
Yeah.
Uh, and then on Thanksgiving, we're just gonna go to the week before.
Right, so November the sixteenth is okay and then December the twenty-first.
Yep.
Thank you, Kathy.
I make a motion, we use those dates. Have a second all in favor. We're there. Any new business, old business? Would you like to adjourn?
Please.
All in. We are. That's right. Thank you, Jim.